Good evening. We actually have two meetings tonight. One, we anticipate to be quite short. We're going to do that now. It's really a purpose of a special meeting of the town council in order for us to call a meeting on June 24th. The second was the originally scheduled meeting for tonight, and that is a public forum on the capital improvement plan. So, if, given that we have a quorum of the council present, I call the meeting to order, and we are being recorded by Amherst Media. There is one very short item that we will discuss as item three, which is to establish an open meeting of the residents according to chapter, section, the charter, section 8.1. It's the second part of that section. It would be on June 24th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in this room. It's for the purposes of hearing presentations and discussing the Community Preservation Act Committee's recommendation regarding the proposed SRO project at 132 North Hampton Road. But prior to that, we have public comment, and I just want to mention that we have a long evening ahead of us, and so I would like to make sure that we not see this as public comment on the capital program, but we do, we are required by law to have public comment. Is there anybody present who would like to make public comment at this time? Please come forward. State your name and where you live. Make sure the button is showing green as turned on.
Just so I understand, Sarah McKee?
Oh, thank you.
Nine Chadwick Court in Amherst. And do I understand that this is not a forum for, mentioned for commenting on public, the public projects?
This is not. The only reason we are having this very first meeting is to actually set the date for the open meeting of the residents.
Then I will save your time and mine, and thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other person, any other people wanting to speak for public comment at this time? Okay, so I'd like to ask councilors, this is, and explain that this is the meeting that we would have instead of the meeting that was originally scheduled for June 18th, when some people did not seem comfortable with the forum that we were planning to have at that time. We went back and looked at the charter and said, okay, under the charter, here is a form of meeting, and let's go with that. So we'll have a motion, and then any further discussion from the council, and then a vote. The motion, if I could please have a motion like this, is in accordance with chapter, I mean charter, section 8.1, to establish an open meeting of the residents on June 24, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the town room for the purpose of hearing presentations and discussing the Community Preservation Act Committee's recommendation regarding the proposed SRO project at 132 North Hampton Road. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and that, Andy was the second. And could I just show the agenda to people up there so that they have a sense of how this meeting will flow? This is draft, doesn't say that on it, but it is draft. And basically, we would start with, call to order as usual. We would have presentations, and I've timed those presentations and checked that all of the people who are involved in those presentations are present, although at this point, the abutters and neighbors have not determined who will actually be making presentations during their 30 minutes. We will then move to public comment and continue on with the rest of the meeting. Is there any question on that agenda? Yes, Alyssa?
Thank you. Is it our impression, based on information we've had so far and things that have been discussed, that somewhere within the presentation by CPAC or by the Amherst Affordable Housing Trust, that the fact that town meeting passed zoning to allow for this three years ago is going to be discussed by one of those groups, since there's not an actual call-out, say, for the planning department or planning board here, to explain that history?
We will have staff present, but we have not posted them to have time to speak. I can either make sure that Mr. Horneck is prepared to speak to that, or that someone else will. Okay? Any other questions? Yes, Evan?
First, a clarification. The motion is just to hold this meeting.
That's correct.
We're not voting on this agenda. This is a proposal-
No, we're just voting to hold the meeting.
Right.
This is just to give you a sense of the discussion of what the agenda would look like now. It actually had a watermark on it saying "draft." And the council will not vote on this evening. In fact, we won't even vote until either July 1st or July 22nd. Okay? Any further questions on this?
I'm surprised by it being shifted to July 22nd. That's all. I thought we were going to do it by July 1st.
We're trying to take a, at this point, we're trying to check out people's, the council members' availability for both of those meetings, so that we make sure we have the quorum required.
Thank you.
Yep. And I have checked with Valley CDC. Either time in July does not particularly affect their application. Is there any further question on this? Yes, Darcy?
I'm just wondering if we're expecting to hold a special meeting any time a question like this comes up?
The charter allows for it. They actually, the residents and abutters could have collected 200 signatures, and at that point, we would have been forced to call such a meeting. We felt that there was such a significant discussion afoot, if you will, on this topic, that we would use the purposes of the charter. We were going to have a meeting using a different format on June 18th, and that did not seem to be an acceptable format to all of the participants. Okay. Okay. Yes, Evan?
The only part of the agenda, since it seems that you're looking for feedback on the agenda-
Yes.
-is I'm not, I understand why, but I'm also not clear, I'm completely, I'm a little confused on 2D. It seems like the, a big section of the meeting is just a presentation by the abutters and neighbors, and I'm not 100% clear why we would separate that out from general public comment. And I'm also, I'm not sure how that's being defined necessarily, so are we saying these are the streets from which these presentations would come from? Their supporters and opponents, how is that being?
Let me just say at this point, it's been, I have not been provided with a overall general email list for this group. I have let other people who have contacted us and let other people know. I have been asked by members of this group if people could make some actual slide presentations that night, and so that's the, that's the purpose of giving that group of people, whether they be for or against abutters and neighbors, time to speak. And then they can also speak during public comment, as can anybody else. Other comments? I welcome your feedback. Yes, Steve?
So, I mean, there are lots of questions that have been sent to us from, basically, the neighbors, and a lot of it has to do with things like public safety, and I just wonder if the town itself, so we have the CPAC, which is a town committee, but I, and we have the Amherst Affordable Housing Trust, but do we have anyone that can respond to questions that might have to do with public safety, or?
The town manager has already spoken to both the chief, I believe, of police, as well as the fire chief, fire and ambulance, and they will either be at this meeting and/or future meetings, but the plan would be that they have looked at some of the statistics provided by other projects and would be prepared to speak to that. George?
You'd said that the original format of the June 18 meeting was not acceptable to some parties?
That's correct.
Would you care to go into any more detail?
I got an email back from several of the neighbors that said they didn't feel that that format fit them, and they suggested another format that was consistent with the charter, and we said, okay, the charter provides for this, let's use that format instead. Alyssa?
I have a quick follow-up question about all the correspondence we've received. Is the intent to have a place on the project website to have that all up prior to this meeting? Because a lot of people have asked us what other people are saying, and saying, well, I'm not sure who's representing me in these voices, and do I need to write a separate letter, and what all is out there? And I'm like, well, rather than asking you to go to the town clerk's office and ask for a copy of all the correspondence, if there's a way to add that material to our website prior to this meeting, now that it's out a little further?
That, we can certainly do that. We have had questions raised during this process as to whether or not emails to town councilors are in fact public documents, and in fact, they are. Any other questions? Yes. Steve?
So I'm sorry to overthink this, but-
It's okay.
If some, not everyone is comfortable speaking in public, and not one, not everyone is comfortable even speaking about this particular subject. But if somebody wants to speak through an agent, is that allowable? In other words, does it have to be the abutters, or can the abutters speak through some that they designated at? So the abutters are in particular, are the parties of interest, because, but can they speak through another party if they felt that-
Anybody can make a public comment, and when they make public comment, they can say, and I have spoken with. Question, yes?
The phrase "abutters" is a very limiting phrase. I think you're meaning some of the neighbors in the neighborhood.
We say, we say "abutters" and "neighbors."
And "neighbors," great. And in answer to Evan, this is all very experimental. The new town council is experimenting with a different form of democracy from the town meeting, which was a very clear form of democracy, and the effort is to let people be heard and to let things be aired.
Are there further comments on this at this time? George?
So I'm to assume that if someone who is an abutter or a neighbor wishes to speak, they would speak under item number three, public comment, they would not speak under D? Or is that supposed to cover anyone who is an abutter or neighbor who has an opinion on this project?
I'm reserving 2D for people who specifically have presentations that they would like to make, some of which have had, I've understood to have PowerPoints, but then other comments certainly would be under 3. People need to let me know that they plan to make a presentation, and they need to make sure we have the presentation, and they make, need to make sure that they let me know that in advance. Does that satisfy the concern? Okay. Yes, Evan?
So, anyone, I'm trying to wrap my head around this 2D.
It's, it's, this is the first time we have tried this-
Understood.
-particular part of the charter. It's experimental, and-
Right.
Go for it.
So, any, anyone who self-identifies as an abutter or neighbor who puts together a presentation will be allowed to give such presentation?
They will need to let me know that they plan to, and if it exceeds 30 minutes, then I'm going to have to make some tough decisions. I've been led to believe that there are not that many of those. Other, Chalene?
So, there may not be that many at this point, because I don't think everyone understood what was until, but now we can, all of us district councilors maybe can let everyone know enough through our Facebook pages and so forth, that there are two opportunities to communicate. One is through presentations, and if that's the case, send the presentations to you, and two is through public comment.
Correct.
Is that right? Okay, thank you.
And once we try this model out, we'll see whether it follows what the intent of the charter was for having such an opportunity. Okay? All right, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Then, the motion is to, in accordance with charter section 8.1, to establish an open meeting of the residents on June 24th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the town room for the purpose of hearing presentations and discussing the Community Preservation Act Committee's recommendation regarding the proposed SRO project at 132 North Hampton Road. We have a motion to second. All those in favor, raise your hand and state aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstain? There's one abstention. It's 12 in favor, no opposed, and one abstention. I'd like a motion to adjourn this particular meeting.
I move to adjourn this.
And there's a second, please?
One.
Okay. And all those in favor, raise your hand and state aye. Aye. That is, you oppose? Abstain? It's unanimous, 13, 0, 0. Okay. We, given that we have a presence of a quorum of the council, we are calling the special meeting of the town council together. It is a public forum on the town capital improvement program, and the time is 6:30, no, 6:47. Thank you. We are going to start this part of the program with a presentation. This is a public forum by the purposes of a public forum. The definition is that there is half as much, there's twice, there is the equal amount of time. In other words, 50% of the evening is spent in public dialogue and comment. At that point, which is after the presentations, we will take questions, and as president, I reserve the option of calling upon someone to answer your questions, so that we're not just sitting here making comment, but actually can engage in some information. So with that, Mr. Bockelman, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity, and this is another first for the council and for the manager, in that this is the first public forum on the capital improvement program as required by the charter. We're very proud of this document, and we're going to be respectful of your time, because I, we really, the idea of the forum is to hear from the public. And Sean Mangano, who is the finance director for the school department, has taken on this as a task, and he's been working with Sonia Aldrich of our staff, plus a number of, all the department heads, and the library director, and the school superintendent, several of the department heads are here today if there are particular questions for their departments. This, under, and so that we're carrying this out under 5.7D of the charter, which requires a public forum. We have gone through an extensive process for this, to get to this point. It's been a thorough process, it's, and I think, very comprehensive. It starts with the Joint Capital Planning Committee. For those who don't know, the Joint Capital Planning Committee includes representatives from the school committee, the Board of Library Trustees, and the town council. They meet to go through all the capital projects and prioritize and decide which ones are fundable and which ones aren't. That is then presented to the finance committee, and which we have done, and through, and then the finance committee makes a recommendation to the council. So with that, I'm just going to turn it over to Sean, and he will go through the program with you.
Hello? So, I'm just going to apologize now if I refer to you as Dr. Morris. It's because I'm very used to saying Dr. Morris, so if I say that, just call me on it. Okay. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the process that the Joint Capital Planning Committee followed, a little bit of the history behind the Joint Capital Planning Committee, and then we'll look at the projects and give a lot of time to review those and ask questions on those. So, as Mr. Bockelman noted, the Joint Capital Planning Committee is comprised of town councilors, library trustees, and school committee members, designed to have a cross-section of government to review capital projects with a sort of a balanced perspective. It was supported this year by myself and Sonia Aldrich. It was created back in 1992, I'm told, and it's responsible for weighing all the capital needs that exist in town. It specifically excludes enterprise fund projects, so some of the large sewer and water projects are not part of this process, and it's got a little overlap with the Community Preservation Group, but for the most part, we do not review those projects, or we did not this year, as part of this process. Ultimately, the JCPC will make a recommendation to the town manager by way of the annual report, which I think is what everyone has in front of them. And this year's JCPC group had some unique challenges, like all of you have experienced with everything else you're doing, is that it's sort of this transition year, so we had a little bit of a condensed timeline, and we really focused on getting this year's projects in a good place. So more about the process. All the department heads fill out these, the project request forms that ask for a lot of backup, the rationale for projects, details about the projects, metrics, and things of that nature, and they get submitted to the Joint Capital Planning Committee for review. And then those department heads will come and make a presentation to the Joint Capital Planning Committee, and the committee will have the chance to ask questions. You know, why are you doing this project? Have you thought about this? Is this the most cost-effective? Questions of that sort, which happened often this year. And then with all that information that the Joint Capital Planning Committee obtains, they use that to help prioritize projects. Because I'm guessing, like this year and probably every other year, the requests outweigh the available funding sources, so there are decisions that have to be made to trim down the requests. The JCPC group also hears from citizens. There's a citizen request process, I think it's the second or third year, and so citizens came and made presentations, just like department heads would, and the committee was able to ask them questions also. And I'll point them out when we get there, but a couple of those requests are part of this year's proposed capital improvement program. And then also during the process, the town manager will give feedback, sort of interim, so that the expectations are aligned between the town manager and JCPC. So, this year in particular, we knew roads were a major focus for the town manager, and that we had to keep that in mind when we were reviewing the different projects. And you'll see that in the projects that were recommended. At the same time, we're looking at the available funding sources. So the primary funding sources that JCPC can consider is the tax levy, and this year, 9.5% of the tax levy was allocated towards capital. Grants that might be out there, private donations, chapter 90 funds, which are funds from the state specifically for road projects. And then, so all those funding sources are put together, and the first thing we do is subtract out any existing debt related to projects that have been approved in the past, because those are legal obligations, those have to be satisfied first. So you start with your funds, you subtract out the legal obligations, and anything left over is basically what the JCPC group has to allocate to the project requests that All the projects that have been recommended have funding sources identified for the projects. So cash capital is a term we use for sort of small to medium-sized projects that we are saying is going to be paid sort of all at once. You'll see a number of those in the, in the final report. There are other funding sources which also pay for the project all at once, but they have a specific funding source, such as grants or private donations, and I'll point out a couple of those. And then the larger projects, we usually will allocate to a borrowing. So if it can't be paid all at once, just due to the size of the project, that cost will be spread out over several years, and will eventually become part of the debt projection, and then the actual debt that gets subtracted out. So all of the forums for every project that department heads request has to identify what the driving force or the factors are that are creating that need. And so these are the seven factors. Safety, asset maintenance and improvement, something that's legally required, infrastructure improvement, productivity improvement, newly identified need, or a relationship to a long-term planned objective. And so these are very important for helping the group prioritize, because obviously JCPC doesn't know the capital items as closely as the department heads do, but when we see something like safety, we know that that's a very high priority than some of these other And so, all that work that happened this year, from December and January through early May, led to this list. These are the projects that are being recommended by JCPC this year. It's broken down into three groups, which is the historical grouping, so there's equipment, which is to the left, buildings, and then facilities. And then within each grouping, it's broken down by department, a quick description of the project, and then the amount. And in the report you have, I think you have the full project listing that goes, gives more detail behind each of those descriptions. If it's just a white-colored project, then it means it's slated to be paid from cash capital, so it's an outright purchase from the tax levy. If it's shaded gray, it means it's projected to be a borrowing, and you'll see that there's a few of those, I'll talk about those more in a second. If it's yellow, it's chapter 90 funds, and if it's that light blue that almost looks gray, that's a grant. The only one up there that falls into that category is the Housing Production Plan, which has a grant. And then if it's that tealy color for protective gear for the fire department, that's another funding source, and in this particular case, it's leftover articles from a prior year. So funds that were not spent from an approved article in the past were sort of recycled for new capital needs and allocated to this. So for, sort of themes of the projects that have been approved, I'm not going to go through all of them, but we'll take questions on all of them. The themes this year, I think, are roads. You'll see almost $2 million allocated towards roads. I think it's the same as last year, or slightly higher than last year, in terms of the total contribution towards roads, and also sidewalks. The $200,000 for sidewalks, I believe, is increased from last year as well. And then the other theme, I would say, was trying to move the building projects in town forward. So there's the three shaded gray projects in the middle column. The first one is for the Public Works new facility, $250,000. The Fire Department new headquarters, $250,000, and $400,000 for a feasibility study for the school project. So all of that is basically to move these projects forward. There's some other decisions that have to happen, but basically JCPC said these are important to keep moving forward. So the 250 for the DPW and the fire station would basically be the next phase of those projects. I think, for example, for the DPW would be looking at schematic design for that project. For the school, it's really contingent on when the MSBA gets back to us, December or January. We'll have more information, take next steps at that point. And then lastly, so the two citizen request projects that are shown here, so one's sort of hidden, the preliminary feasibility study at Crocker Farm, which is at the very bottom of the center column, that came from a citizen request wanting to explore what's possible at Crocker Farm more fully. And then the other one, I believe, is sort of part of, or packaged in the transportation plan, $50,000. That was to develop a, I think it was a sidewalk concept further. So both of those were specific requests to the, to JCPC this year. So, these are all the projects. We're happy to, I don't know if you want to take the time now or keep going through the rest of the presentation, but we're happy to answer questions on any of these, these projects.
Please continue on with the presentation.
So, in addition to approving the current year's list of projects, we also developed the 10, a 10-year plan. The charter calls for a five-year, but in the past, we've done a 10-year, so we maintain that for this year. So this first page is the summary, and at the top, you have your available funding sources for FY '20, but also projected out through, for the next 10 years. And then below that, you have proposed capital spending. So this has all the projects that department heads have identified as needs in the future. And then the important number to look at is if the available funding sources exceed or are below the proposed spending. And so you can see this column right here, which is a large negative number, so clearly we have more needs than we have available funding. So a point that was made very clear, and we heard from many different people this year, is we really have to give a hard look at the out-years with capital projects. One of the reasons why this is so out of whack is because it includes the debt payments for the new, for the new DPW and also the new fire station, but we haven't taken a look at the other projects that are on the list to try to prioritize those. So right now, this is really just showing sort of all the needs that are in town without really going through and starting to trim that back a little bit. But that is a primary focus for the next JCPC group, is to really look at those out-years and come back with a plan that we think we can afford. and come back with a plan that we think we can afford. And so this shows also the 9.5% here, and then the plan for JCPC, or the plan for the town has had in the past, is to keep increasing half a percent every year in terms of the tax levy that's allocated towards capital. So this shows what that deficit would look like if we went to 10% next year. So you can see, the deficit gets a little smaller, because more funds are allocated towards capital. The rest of the 10-year plan shows, is broken down by equipment, buildings, and facilities, and then within that, by functional areas. So you can see the different fiscal years and the projects that are identified as needs. And again, within this, there's shading that indicates what the funding source is. So the gray is the borrowing, and there's some other, there's a key that tells you what the other funding sources are. And so that's it. That's the projects that have been proposed for FY '20 and the rest of the 10-year plan, and we're happy to answer questions on any of the projects.
I'm going to move to questions at this point from the audience, unless the council has a clarifying question at this time. All right. We're going to clear the decks, although I have the feeling we'll see you up here again, Sean and Paul. And I'd like to see a show hand of those people who would like to ask questions or make statements. Please come forward. When you come forward, please state your name, where you live, and your relationship to the town, and also, if you have made comment or plan to make comment, please make sure you register back there at the sheet. Okay? Sir?
My name is David Clooney. I live at 984, oh, thank you. My name is David Clooney. I live at 984 East Pleasant Street, and I used to be a member of Town Meeting. Also relevant is that I work for the fire department full-time as a firefighter and a paramedic, and I'm therefore a member of the union as well. And I just wanted to ask if perhaps one of the chiefs could answer how the capital requests, in particular for the ladder truck, which is from 1992, and the ambulances, which see a lot of use, how those affect the maintenance budgets, and whether or not that, if the effect on the maintenance budgets is significant enough that there might be some value in shifting those priorities to get a better value out of the capital money. Although our primary problem at the fire department remains staffing, this is a capital meeting, so I'm more interested in the vehicles and equipment at this point.
And thank you for keeping your questions to the issue of capital, since that's what it is. Mr. Buckelman, if we're going to call on people from town, I'm going to go to you and then say, you decide.
Yeah, that was my question.
Thank you very much.
Hi, Lyndsey Strombourn, Assistant Fire Chief, and I'm responsible for the operations, so therefore the vehicles in the department. I think what Mr. Clooney is talking about is the fact that if you look at your capital requests, there are only two items on it for the fire department this year, which is protective gear and some radio equipment. What he's referring to is, what you don't see is the requests that didn't make it this far. Specifically, he mentioned the ladder truck and an ambulance. The ladder truck is actually 1988, so it's 31 years old. Therefore, it's exceeded the NFA's recommended lifespan for a ladder truck of 30 years, which is why we've had it on the capital plan now for five or six years. So it's been coming around the corner, was not put forward this year. I think that is his concern, and the other firefighters' concern is why something like that, that's been on the radar for five years, is not showing up at this point to be voted on by the town council. To his point about maintenance, yes, we did spend about $30,000 on the ladder truck this past year for maintenance, and that's expected to grow as it continues to age and parts become unavailable. Likewise, ambulances, we are trying to get on a seven-to-eight-year replacement cycle versus our previous 10-year replacement cycle because of the use they're getting. And yeah, we did try to request an ambulance this year, but it did not make it as far as JCPC.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody from JCPC that would like to address this issue at this time? There's only three of us here, so. No? Okay, Andy, please.
Yeah, as Chair of JCPC, I guess I'll take the role of just saying that we did give very serious consideration to the ladder trucks, because it has been a subject that has been discussed within JCPC for quite a number of years. And in the end, we consulted with the town manager and through the town manager, senior staff in the department, and the question became weighing that against what was our other largest need that we were hearing tremendous amount from all over town, including many departments who use our roads, and that is the roads. And the ultimate decision of the committee, after receiving input from the town manager and others, was that we felt that making significant headway on the 16-plus-million-dollar backlog in our roads and making progress on our sidewalks was what we would recommend to the town manager. And of course, our, and that is our role, to make a recommendation to the town manager.
Is there any further comment on this at this time? Okay. Are there other people who would like to make public comment? Pat?
I'm new to a lot of this, but this starts to seem to me that we're not doing the maintenance that we need for the fire department in this instance, which is what happened over time with the schools, and we seem as a town to delay maintenance, so I'm just kind of wondering about this process.
The overall maintenance, is that what you're discussing?
Yeah, for buildings, and in this instance, for the fire truck.
Okay.
And things like that.
Okay.
I hear the roads issue, but I'm concerned about ongoing maintenance.
Thank you.
So all the comments that have been made are accurate. There are enormous needs in the town, and we've had to prioritize what we can afford and what we, under the limitations we have in terms of where our funding is. So I think we looked at the fire truck and the quicker schedule for replacing the ambulances, and compelling arguments were made by the chiefs. It's not like they didn't bring it to the attention. So I think the chiefs for the fire department were very clear about the needs, so, and advocated for them, but understood the constraints that the town is in. In terms of, I think you're talking, referencing more building maintenance. I think our vehicles, we will maintain them, but in terms of building maintenance, it's an issue. We know it's an issue. We tried to address it in a very small way by putting sums of money in the operating budgets for the fire, the police, and the DPW, and in conservation for land use too, so that they just have a small pot of money to address some of the more urgent building issues. And we work with the departments to help maintain those buildings, and there are some capital requests on their facilities for actual building improvements. For some of our buildings, we're sort of hesitant to invest too much, because we are very, we have high expectations that we'll be replacing the fire, the central fire station and the DPW. So life and safety issues, we want to address in those buildings, but we try not to rehab them, because we are hoping that we're going to get new facilities, because those current facilities are so way out of date and just, it's not right for our employees to be working in those facilities. And it's time for the town to step up and replace those two buildings.
I don't know if this is true or not, but I've heard that some of the fire trucks have had to be special-adapted models to fit the too-small fire station. And is it true that if we bought a new truck now, it wouldn't be able to fit in our present fire station?
To the chief. Evening. Chief Nelson. Yeah, if we buy a new ladder truck, I mean, are we talking about ladder truck? We can buy it so that it will, it will fit in the north station. When we build a new station, we're going to make, have to make sure that it's adequate for any new truck, truck that comes down, down the road.
Other comments at this time? Margaret is our official timekeeper, so I need to look to her and know where we stand.
There's still five minutes.
Okay. Meeting the conditions, the requirements of the charter, that we have as much time for public comment as we do for presentations, we are still open for public comment. Alyssa?
I'm confused. Is now the time for this person to talk, or were they supposed to talk at a different time later tonight? Or, I just think because this is new to people, they're not really sure what the flow is, and neither am I.
Margaret? Did the person that provided you with this?
I don't believe, I don't believe she's here.
Okay, thank you. This is a statement that we received from Sarah McKee. It's a, she's the former Jones Library Trustee President, and it's in regard to the Jones Library Demolition and Expansion Project. Clearly, when we receive things like this, we also then make sure they're available. We actually would like to hear from you, so. The floor is open. Yes? Ms. Marshall?
Hi, Sarah Marshall, 64 Inns Avenue. Is this plan the same thing as the one town, one plan? Or is, or is there a different or simultaneous process happening?
Mr. Buckelman, do you want to speak to that? And Mr. McGannam?
So they're connected. The one town, one plan, I think, will feed into this. So in this plan, the new building projects are sort of pushed together, because right now, they're still sort of being developed. When they're actually going to fall, as that one town, one plan gets more developed, that will feed into this overall capital planning program.
Okay. And I might mention that we continue to look at sharpening the model, to look at our capital program. And as you saw in the capital projects, capital plan, that we have put aside or reserved the option, I should say, of $250,000 for a DPW schematic design, $250,000 for a fire station schematic design, and $400,000 toward a match, should the MSBA come through, we hope, on December 12th. None of those will happen until we actually are ready to vote, because those, in fact, are capital, and council will have to vote on them separately. We cannot move forward on either DPW or fire until such time as we have a site, because you cannot do a schematic design until you have a site on which to build. And on the school, it would actually be the feasibility phase that we have applied for and spent a lot of time on this, late this winter. Kathy?
I just want to add a comment to respond to Sir Marshall's comment. If you look at the more detailed tables that Sean just quickly showed for year two through 10, the big deficit shows up because the new debt cost for the buildings is included, but we can't spend more than we have. So that's the question that we're going to be grappling with over the summer and the fall as a town and as a council on a how. You know, with, if we want to keep doing roads, if we want to do building maintenance, where do new buildings that are expensive come in? So it shows up in a couple of different places as new debt, and then toward the end, there's an estimated cost to the town budget of the projects.
Okay. Is there further comment? Yes, please come forward.
I'm Ginny Hamilton. I live at 140 Middle Street in South Amherst, and I want to thank you and you for this sobering and realistic map of what our town needs, that so many of these capital projects have been delayed for too long, and the longer we delay, the more expensive things get. So those numbers are sobering, and they're realistic, and it is up to us as a town and to you all as our elected leaders to help us find the way to make these happen for the good of the whole town. I love the phrase, one town, one plan, and I do think that that's what we need. And so I want to thank you for taking this on with diligence and with honesty. It's not going to be easy, but I think it's something that our town is ready for and very much needs. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any further comments at this time? Hearing none. Is there any further comment at this point? I call for, yes.
We will have, I think, a separate public forum on the capital projects.
In the fall?
Yes, good.
Yes.
So that's when people have a chance to talk in more detail about fire department, public works, school, and library.
The big capital projects. The really big ones.
Kent Ferber. I live at 481 Station Road in South Amherst, and I have a question, which is, the amounts indicated in the general overall plan for total buildings for FY '21 and '22, do those take into account any other sources of revenue? For example, the 13-9 that the MBLC is going to come, they include this, so the 72 million is net of the grant for the, for the library?
Since Sean was the one that built this, we'll make sure he answers it correctly.
So on the spending table, what he's pointing to, what's included for spending for all the projects? So for the DPW, it's the full cost of the DPW estimate. For the fire station, it's the full estimate. For the schools, it's just the town, the estimated town share. And for the library, it's comprised of two components. So the library's, the last presentation, the latest numbers, there's two pieces. There's the net cost that the town would ultimately bear, which is about 15.9 million, but there's also this fundraising piece, which is about 6 million or so. So what's in this capital plan is the net town share of 15.9 and the fundraising portion, because the understanding is that if the fundraising doesn't come through as planned, then the town would have to pick up that difference. So we're showing the full amount for now, which is the way it's been presented in the past. But again, assuming the fundraising occurs as planned, then the net share to the town would be the 15.9.
And it appears in '21, I believe, because that's what we understood from the library trustees and the directors, so that is when the application would be, before the.
But it does not include the state grant.
Right.
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other questions at this time? Okay. Please.
Go ahead.
So is there a way for people, including myself, to find out in the roads? So is there a way for people, including myself, to find out in the roads maintenance budget, how much of it is going for bike paths or, you know, a segregation of that? And, and my other question is, including bus stops, and like in South Amherst, a couple of places where there are no shelters and all, so can we see that level of detail anywhere?
Just like Town Meeting. No. We, there is no list now of projects that are coming up and what they are and what their costs are, so we can, like, show you where they're going. We haven't finished that list. The work we're doing now, we can tell you what certain projects are. East Pleasant Street, the bus stops on East Pleasant Street that we put in with the pull-offs and the sidewalks, that's about 150,000 is what those bus stops and the sidewalks have cost. So when we finish the projects, we have a better number. We do have estimates as we go along. There's no, East Hadley Road, the project on East Hadley Road, that's moved along sufficiently. There's numbers for that. But nothing beyond the future, what we're doing next year is actually got a good number right now. So we're working on that. Does that answer your question?
I guess what we would like to see is, how did we spend our money then, at some point?
If you want to see how you spend your money, you can go through the breakdown in accounting, and accounting can pull some of that stuff off. There is some mixing and matching, though, because we pay for things at different accounts. Something may be paid for out of the Housing Choice Grant, that number's over here. And then you'd have to pull out the Chapter 90 money or any of the town money. So the money is accounted for, but then you have to actually go through and pull things together specifically for the project to see what the project numbers are. So you can't really match up funding sources easily with what we spent. Do you know what we spent, or do you know the funding source? Sorry, that's just kind of how we are right now.
I think what we'd like to know is the projects and what we spent. Okay?
That's doable.
Any other questions from the audience, comments? Not? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Submove.
And second?
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And abstained. Adjourned 13-0-0. Thank you.